The Legion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is why most of you are here, I think, tonight, which is announcement of the ninth recipient of the Lawrence R. Temple Distinguished Public Service Award. And I understand Debbie Sarand will...
Tom Swarthout.
And Tom Swarthout himself will make the presentation jointly, so please.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the whole Louie family, the whole gang, or almost all the gang, so welcome. You should all be very proud of your dad tonight. The Lawrence Temple Service Award is made annually in honor of Larry Temple, who was serving the city of Lake Forest as alderman when he passed away in August of 2000. Then-mayor Howard Kerr stated that Larry exemplified all that was good in Lake Forest, and he had the capacity to relate to and work with people to bring understanding, compromise, and solutions to difficult issues. This year, the Temple Service Award Committee has selected John Louie as the recipient of the Service Award for 2018. I have known John for a very long time, and thought I knew all the contributions he has made to life in Lake Forest. I was wrong. He has served in many capacities that I was unaware of, and I am honored to present this award to John tonight on behalf of Maddy Dugan, the chair of our committee, who could not be here this evening to present the award in person. John, it is a privilege to bestow this well-deserved honor on you. Congratulations from the committee and all whose lives you have impacted through your service. And Tom?
Thank you. I too had served with John. It's been an honor to know John my whole life, and I will now read the award. To honor a living volunteer to a local government or community organization in the city of Lake Forest, Illinois for distinguished public service, whereas individuals selected for the Lawrence R. Temple Distinguished Public Service Award must demonstrate leadership, responsiveness to the public and staff, duration, scope of services, constructive participation in meetings, and the ability to represent the community's values. And whereas John A. Louie III was nominated for the Lawrence R. Temple Distinguished Public Service Award, and whereas the award committee was struck by the depth and breadth of the civic and community service to the city of Lake Forest, and whereas John is a lifelong resident of Lake Forest, and after his high schooling returned to the community where he focused so special and knows so well marrying Janice Cricora, another Lake Forest native, and raising their three children, and here, and whereas John, wide spectrum of volunteerism in Lake Forest began at School of St. Mary's, his former grade school, and with the Church of St. Mary's, including decorating the church for Christmas and Easter every year for forty-six years, and whereas John A. Louie III has owned and operated the iconic Lake Forest shop since 1981, and has been an active member of the Chamber of Commerce since 1976, and continues to enthusiastically advocate for the local businesses, and, page two, whereas John has a long history of volunteer service with Gordon Community Center, beginning in 1978 as board member, where he eventually held all board positions at one time or another, participating in three major capital campaigns, where he continues to volunteer as a member of the landscaping committee, and whereas John has been a member of the local Rotary Club since 1978, serving as its president on the fundraising committee, was chairman of Lake Forest Lake Bluff Antiques Car Show for twenty-five years, and whereas John Louie actively participated in Lake Forest government, including time on the caucus as a fourth ward committee chairman, serving on the zoning board of appeals from 1999 to 2003, serving as chairman of the Public Works Committee, where he oversaw the snow operation plan updates and South Beach access road reconstruction, and whereas John Louie continued to serve Lake Forest residents for eight years as fourth ward alderman from 2003 to 2011, always listening to concerns of all residents and working with the city of staff of various topics, generally caring about all issues facing the city and all projects brought forth to the city, serving on the senior commission and business development committee, and contributing significantly to the centennial celebration of Lake Forest Day in 2008. And whereas the knowledge of Mr. Louie possesses for Lake Forest and its values, balancing his character, his ability to address future needs of the residents, and passionate commitment to the city is evident by the length of time he volunteers, his strong and valued contribution to the community. Whereas the award committee believes that John Louie, like Larry Temple, has distinguished himself in civic contribution that benefits the citizens of Lake Forest, now therefore John A. Louie III is awarded the Lawrence R. Temple Distinguished Public Service Award his nineteenth day of February 2019. Sincerely, Maddy Dugan, Chairman, Lake Forest Lawrence R. Temple Distinguished Public Service Award Committee. Congratulations.
John, step forward.
You know, I just want to comment.
John, step to the...so the folks at home. Yes, we are.
First, the first is I have to thank my parents, who instilled in us that you have to give back and be part of the city, and you only make it better by helping it out and giving your time. The second part is I have to thank my family, late dinners, no dinners, taking, especially my wife going to all kinds of functions that she didn't particularly want to go to over the years, late nights getting home and all the rest. It's been fun, we've all learned, and it's a great privilege to get this award. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, John, for everything. Now, we're gonna take a...some of the committee members are here, we're gonna take a bigger picture with the council.
So if you all remain standing.
We slide in a little bit.
Biddy, how do you want to do it?
That's perfect.
We'll get you out of here.
Pretty much.
I know, I know, I know.
Come to the table.
Me, this way. Okay.
John, I think you started when you were about six.
Trying to keep up the momentum. Well, I graduated.
I blink every time I...
Well, it's the family of Lake Forest.
Sure, line up.
My daughter, Eileen, who probably most of you don't, my wife, Janice. My son, John, and my son, James.
But not the grandchildren.
Especially the little one.
No, they have to be a bit.
Next item of business, comments by the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, good evening. Excuse me, I'm still a little under the weather, so I'll make this fairly brief. I do have just one quick update, and it's regarding the comprehensive plan working group. Just so everyone knows, both council and the public, the working group that was appointed for the first phase of the comprehensive plan update is meeting tomorrow evening at 6:30 PM at the Telegraph Road Fire Station. As you can see from the schedule above, the group is close to completing its study of the Waukegan Road Settler Square Business District. Tomorrow evening, there will be a presentation of the land use concepts the group has developed to date, and there will be an opportunity for public comment and discussion. In addition, the group also has a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday evening and February 26th to hopefully finalize its recommendations. After that, we'll be coming back to city council to establish working groups for future phases of the process. And so with that, I know Kathy Zerniak would be happy to answer any specific questions that the council may have regarding the working group meetings, and if not, that completes my report for this evening.
Questions, comments? Thank you very much, and thank you for making the report. You are under the weather, I know.
A little bit.
You're above and beyond the call of duty here. Next, committee reports. The Public Works Committee has a report concerning approval of modifications to the city's stormwater management policy, to be presented by Jim Lockafer, Public Works Department analyst.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I did prepare, in preparation of the topic tonight, two very brief slides that I wanted to review with the council pretty quickly here. First one being just some general background information on the stormwater management policy as it currently exists, as well as those proposed modifications, what we're looking to do. So the stormwater management policy was actually originally adopted in March of 2016. That policy went through the Public Works Committee, then made its way to city council, where it was ultimately approved. Provisions of that policy, I list a few there, it's certainly not all of them, but some of the highlights. The policy outlines private and public responsibilities. There's a process outlined also in the policy for if a resident has a private stormwater issue that they would like staff to evaluate, we'll actually send a representative from our water and sewer section, along with a representative from the engineering section. And then also, there's a section on Illinois drainage law, just a brief summary of what that is. Again, it's not all the provisions, but just some of the highlights there. So in looking back to the November 2018 Finance Committee budget meeting, Director of Public Works Michael Thomas provided the committee with a review of ravines, some projects that the Public Works Department's currently investigating, and a part of that presentation included a slide on private ravine issues that we have become aware of. As part of that slide, he identified and alluded to that staff would be working on a ravine management policy. After that meeting, staff began to research some municipal, other municipal ravine management programs. We took that research and actually began to develop a standalone ravine management policy. Staff met to review that with the city attorney's office, and through that review, the recommendation came to, instead of having this standalone policy, why not utilize the existing stormwater management policy to identify and incorporate ravines? Because really, especially when you look at those highlights, those existing provisions, they certainly apply to what we are looking to accomplish with ravines. With that, the city attorney's office began to propose and develop those modifications. Again, there weren't any significant changes to the existing provisions, it's just recognizing ravines as, at the core, they convey stormwater, the issues that we're seeing with ravines are stormwater-related, unfortunately, it's that undercutting and erosion. Why not incorporate ravines into that policy? So with that, the city attorney's office developed those modifications. We took those modifications to the Public Works Committee at the last meeting, January 8th. At that meeting, Chairman Bushman, along with Alderman Rumel, offered a few more suggestions that really helped to reorganize the policy to create a better flow. There was also some fine-tuning of some existing language, as well as reducing some of that redundant language, some of that was eliminated. So they shared those edits with us, those edits were then shared with the city attorney's office, and ultimately incorporated into the version that is before you tonight. So with that, again, there were no significant changes to the policy itself, those existing provision, really, this was just incorporating ravines, making sure those same provisions will, they'll now apply to ravines. So with that, happy to take any questions that you might have.
So what's the rollout plan, Jim, for homeowners, because this will impact private homeowners, as well as ravines, the city is the primary manager for, so what's our plan for getting homeowners informed?
So we do maintain a list, there's approximately 325 properties that are adjacent to ravines or own some portion of a ravine, so we can certainly share those, this update, with those homeowners. We also post the policy on the city's website, under the water and sewer section, along with, we have another just general stormwater section, so we certainly want to post that information there, too. I actually had a conversation with Susan Banks earlier this evening about rolling those changes out, if they were to be approved tonight, making sure we get those on the websites, but absolutely, we can also take that next step in sharing that policy, developing a letter with those homeowners who are adjacent to ravines.
Will there be suggestions or requirements?
It's more suggestions. Essentially, this policy outlines those responsibilities of the private homeowner. If they recognize that there is an issue on their property that relates to their ravine, and they want to reach out to us to set up a meeting, we certainly can meet with them, offer recommendations based on what we see. That's part of the policy, too, outlining that process.
Don't the issues often come in when there's an issue on their property, but it impacts somebody else's property, too?
Sure, absolutely, and to add to that, there's also a provision in this policy, and I should have highlighted it in my presentation, where if there is an issue, a private issue that may be directly impacting public infrastructure, we will then reach out to that private homeowner to work with them to ultimately get that resolved. So that is an aspect of it.
Yeah, this is not a list of prescriptions and whatnot, or obligations, it's really, as Jim says, incorporating ravines into the overall city stormwater policy, and a lot of it is the issues like, for example, between adjoining landowners, or, you know, this is something that's been going on for a long time, so there's a whole bunch of established processes and procedures and ways those things are handled, so.
Well, I think, oh, you were first, go ahead.
So what happens if the shoe's on the other foot, and it's our problem that's causing a problem on the property owner's ravine?
Sure, so we have already conducted some preliminary investigation, we actually, last summer, brought in a legal intern to start some preliminary research on those 325 properties. Using that research, and prior to conducting that research, we actually held a meeting with the city attorney's office about, okay, what types of things should we be looking for? Easements, looking at that subdivision file, we have house files that Kathy's department keeps, and there's a lot of information that we already have here in Lake Forest. But then he was also going on to the Lake County e-records database to research those properties. That research would then be used if an issue arises where, and a lot of these issues are this, where it's not black and white, it's 100% a public issue, a lot of them are mixed. That's where we would then use that intern's preliminary research, reach out to Julie and her office, and further investigate the issue. And that's actually something we're doing with a few project areas that were actually presented at the November 2018 Finance Committee meeting.
And if it's something we have to remediate, then it would show up on the director's to-do list?
Correct. We would bring that forward through the CIP program.
I just wanted to point, in answer to Alderman Beidler's question, I just wanted to point out that there's a whole public education portion of this, and, you know, number three is, I think, should be pointed, provide a copy of this policy to local realtors for distribution during a property sale, which I think is significant. It does put a burden, I guess, on the city, to, I don't know how we were planning to really roll that out to realtors, but I would encourage us to find a way of doing that. And then, number four is to educate private property owners regarding their responsibility for the repair and maintenance of improved and unimproved conveyances for stormwater on their property, including but not limited to ravines and bluffs. So again, I think there is a little bit of an onus on us to educate our residents on this policy going forward.
And just real quick to touch on that, as far as getting that information to the realtors, I know Susan Banks maintains these welcome packets that she shares with the chamber, so when a new resident comes, the chamber shares various information. I know in the Public Works Department, we have our sanitation guidelines included in that, things of that nature. That's absolutely, I think, a great recommendation and avenue that we could further get this information out. And then, as far as educating homeowners, homeowners, that's something that absolutely we want to continue to do, and this past September, the LFCL actually put on a stormwater community engagement forum, and it was labeled as stormwater, but there was a special focus on ravines, where the city had a table, open lands came and had a table, and there was, you know, best management practices shared in regards to ravine maintenance. So it's something we absolutely want to go continue.
Hopefully, we'll continue that and make it a yearly or every other year type of activity, because I think it's very helpful. People buy these homes, and they don't necessarily understand everything that comes with it, you know, and whether they're in a flood plain, or, you know, close to the creek can make a big difference, or on a ravine or a bluff, so.
So one major, one major aspect of stormwater management and ravine management is preventative maintenance, and I think that's something we've talked about, but we certainly want to make that very clear. When we talk about water management, it's about slowing the pace of water through a territory, if you will. So the right plantings are very important, and I know that isn't necessarily the hardcore center of public works, but maybe in our communications, we can certainly highlight the kinds of plants and not mowed grass that slow down water through a flow.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, rain gardens and rain barrels and all of those things.
Just real quick to further your point, Alderman Rumel, Kathy and I meet with the local real estate community quarterly, and so this certainly can be a topic of conversation that we can surface with them at that time.
I think that's a great, you know, spring is going to be here very quickly, and we are, all are looking at the snow on the ground, and it's not going anywhere but rapidly to the closest creeks, or ravines or bluffs, so that's very timely.
Indeed. Any other thoughts, questions? Seeing none, are there any comments from the audience about these revisions to the stormwater management policy? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the modifications to the stormwater management policy?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second?
This is a roll call vote. City Clerk.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Rumel.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is opportunity for citizens to address the council on non-agenda items. Is anyone wishing to bring a matter forward? Seeing none, next is the items for omnibus vote consideration, there are seven this evening. Number one is approval of the February 4th, 2019, city council minutes. Two, consideration of an ordinance adopting the third supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the city of Lake Forest, incorporating recent code amendments into the official city code. If deemed appropriate, this could be a first reading and a grant of final approval. Third, approval of a resolution appointing delegate and alternate delegate to the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency, lovingly known as IRMA. Number four, approval of second and third year of contract of, with direct response resources for vehicle, pet, and parking licenses and permits, and assignment of a portion of the contract to American Printing Technologies. Number five, request waiving the bid process and approve an agreement for the infrastructure management services pavement management study for fiscal year 2020 for a not-to-exceed amount of $81,785. And six, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the building review board. Deemed appropriate, this can be a first reading and a grant of final approval. Seven, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the zoning board of appeals. This also, if deemed appropriate, can be a first reading if desired by council, final approval, as we do every meeting. Any one of these items could be removed for a separate vote or discussion, but short of that, are there any particular questions or concerns with regard to the information in our packets? Yes, ma'am?
I had some conversations, Biddy knows, we had some conversations about the updating of our ordinances, and I think there's some significant information that I'd like to, for Biddy to talk about a little bit, to make public, because I think there have been some changes in the updates to our ordinances that people should know about. So if you wouldn't mind, Biddy, just giving a quick sort of update, so everyone knows what we're doing here tonight.
Yeah, just because of, excuse me, just because the way that question was posed, let me just say, there's been nothing out of the public's eye about any of these ordinances. This is basically a cleanup of our ordinances, based on the piecemeal changes that we make from meeting to meeting about one thing or another, and how that's all compiled into an online code that people can go to, so.
But there's also a new little click on the, that I'd like to highlight.
Correct. So this, the third supplement...
City Clerk, Biddy Boyer, yes, please.
Mayor, members of the council, the third supplement includes all legislation that you have passed in 2017, that was passed by the city council in 2017. What's new on the American Legal website is an advanced legislative link, and what that does is it allows us to store all pending ordinances. So anything that was passed in 2018 is waiting there for the next supplement for codification, and what it does, it provides a resource for anybody who's looking at our... And what it does, it provides a resource for anybody who's looking at our code. There's a little bit of a breakdown sheet telling you what the ordinance is about and the date that it was passed. And then, on an annual basis, and usually in December, we will codify everything that has already been approved. It's more of a traditional item here, and that'll make a fourth supplement. And then, anything that we pass here at city council will sit at that legislative link, so that while you can see it in the city council packets, it's there. This really just puts it in one location, so that people can see it all the time. If that helped out.
Yeah, we had a conversation. I was looking at some ordinances and saw that they, the last time they were updated, I think at that point was 2016, and it was two years later, and we're passing these ordinances, and I'm going, if I'm looking for a particular ordinance, how do I find the latest addition of it? It's like we used to do old shepherdizing in law school, you know, to bring everything up to date. And so this link now is providing that ability to get the latest and greatest ordinance.
Is that a link that's available for the public?
Yes.
It is.
What's the link, Biddy?
So, if you're looking for the city code, you can get there via our website, and as soon as that screen pops up, it'll say "advanced legislation", and it'll say "view code, help, or advanced legislation". As soon as you click on that, everything comes up, and it's a PDF format of all the ordinances that the city council sees.
And is that, that's different? That isn't the way it was before? That information wasn't all in one place before, is that correct?
Correct. We had an opportunity to negotiate part of the contract with American Legal last year in October, and that's one of the benefits that we added, was that link.
It does sound like a benefit.
It's amazing.
Yeah, it's a bit of a, the ordinance has always been there, or it's been there for many years, on the web, if you will. But this is a better system for keeping, more current, more contemporaneous, what's the word?
So when you go there, it'll take you to American Legal Publishing Company. It takes you out of our website to, to link, yeah.
Any other thoughts, questions?
Mr. Mayor, in item number five, we're requested to waive the bid process, which is an item that I think it behooves us to have increased sensitivity to. And I'm wondering if we can ask Mr. Thomas to expand on the rationale for the type of pavement study we're asking IMS to do, its value, and the reasonableness of the cost that he's proposing that we approve tonight.
Good thought.
Thank you, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. The IMS program, we have, we, the city, have been utilizing it for well over two decades. It's our objective way of analyzing the structure of all the pavement in town. And up here is a chart that provides you the last two times that we have performed this study. We've done it in 2013, 2016, and again, we're proposing to do it in 2019. But again, this analyzes all of the streets and provides us, then, a detailed grade of not only the surface, but the subsurface of all streets, and this time, all parking lots, that we use, then, to determine which streets we recommend go into the resurfacing plan that you then review in November at your budget meeting. So this evening's request is simply to get on IMS's docket. Many, many towns throughout the US use IMS. We are hoping that our paving program and patching program can be completed by the end of May. We'll be bringing that to you soon. IMS then would come in in June. They're going to need July and August and part of September to create the report. We'll need a little bit of time to review all the data, and then, again, create the capital plan, which is typically due mid-October, and then, city council has their budget meeting mid-November. So this is knowing full well that many towns sign up IMS. I want to be one of the first, so we can put down the date and get them in when we need them in. To answer your question, Alderman Bushman, as far as value, we believe it's a very good value to the city, because again, it, what we can see and what we can analyze is simply from a visual standpoint. This is much more technical and provides an objective analysis of the overall quality. One of the things that is different this year that we're going to try to incorporate are all of the parking lots. So typically, when we work with our city manager and finance director, they will give us, for lack of a better term, a bucket that says you can work with X amount of dollars for concrete streets, for asphalt streets, for parking lots, sidewalks, curb and gutter. So it's our job, then, to divvy that up, and we need something to base that on, and this is where we fall.
And does it also provide, now, having used them in the past, a database to compare and going forward with it?
Very much so, very much so. So, it is all numeric data, so we can see at what rate any degradation of streets and/or parking lots is actually occurring. And we have different suspicions, but this will prove whether we are correct or not. There are, for example, some streets that have a very high score on the surface, and we say, gosh, that street looks to be in great shape, but the subsurface is in very poor condition. And that, then, puts into our mind, reconstruct. Reconstruction of streets is a very expensive item that we would have to do. So that is, again, one of the goals, is we want to try and stay up with resurfacing our streets. We don't want to get to a point where we've got to dig the whole street out, bring in all fresh space, all new stone, and build them up. We want to try and stay on top of them. It's cheaper that way.
Mike, we own that data, though. Once they do the data, it's, we have it.
Correct.
So, should we decide that we wanted to use a different firm at some point? It sounds like we're incredibly happy with how they do the work and the work they do, the quality of their work, the information. It sounds like that's going very smoothly, but should that change, we own the data that they accumulate.
Correct. And it's a proprietary system that they use, so their data would not work with another firm's approach. This works with IMS, and has for many years.
So there's really not an option to go elsewhere, if that's what you're saying?
No, no.
And that's why it's a no-bid situation?
Yeah, okay.
Mike, given the average life of a concrete street, or the average life of an asphalt street, do we have to do the whole city every three years? Or could we reduce that coverage in an efficient and effective way? Would you be comfortable with that?
I don't think I would be, and here's why. We say, on average, curb streets should last about 20 years. Non-curb streets should last us anywhere 12 to 14. We have had examples, Onwensia was a very good example, where we had to replace it within eight years, and we weren't sure what was going on with Onwensia. We did a good amount of research and ended up determining that the material that we received for that pore, for that lay, was not good. But that, quite frankly, is something where we want to be able to provide data back to the city council to justify why we need to spend so much money. When we look at the capital plan, capital plan's 3.3, 3.4 million. One million of that is for street resurfacing, simply resurfacing, and that amount has gone down over the years, to a point where we're very aware of that, saying, this is a little bit, it's challenging to manage. We would like to resurface more streets to stay on top of it. But I would not feel comfortable stepping away from doing the whole city.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts or questions on the omnibus items? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the omnibus items.
So moved.
Second?
This is a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Six yeas, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. There are no other agenda items for tonight, so I'll entertain a motion for adjournment, unless there's any other discussion on any items council would like to entertain at this time. I have a motion.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.